Ms. Kalanowski?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Darrow?
Here.
President McCullin?
Here. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't expect you to...
Members have had the opportunity to review the last two additions of our board minutes without any changes or corrections to this because I have a motion to approve tonight's board minutes or previous board minutes.
So move.
Second. Mr. Darrow, Mr. Bush, roll call please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Neumoff?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
President McCullin?
Yes. Any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda?
There are none.
With none, I would ask for approval of tonight's agenda or a motion to approve.
So move.
Bush, Mr. Neumoff, roll call please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Neumoff?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCullin?
Yes.
Trying to figure out the order, huh? A little different.
Someone's moving a little fast tonight, so...
Well, you know, I want to keep us on task. That brings us to communications to the board. Sawyer.
Thank you, President McCullin. I'd just like to begin briefly this evening to comment on the return to the 2018-19 school year. It's been an incredible opening. In the five years I've been in the school district, and I've commented this to the staff and administrators and teachers and non-teachers across the school district, I actually think this is the best opening we've had in the last five years, to be honest, despite some challenges that we had to communicate related to upcoming construction events or ongoing construction events across the school campus, be it the high school roof, the middle school gym, or the McCoy steps. It's honestly been a wonderful opening to the 2018-19 school year. We have nearly 5,000 kids on campus every single day. Everybody's excited. Traffic is working its way out. People are adjusting to changes that we're practicing in preparation for the closure of Dublin-Gramble Road on October 1st. But all in all, it's been an incredible opening. We want to thank clearly the staff for everyone's efforts across the board, regardless of the role functions responsibly they have in our school district, the parents, and quite honestly, the kids, because they're the ones that have to come to this place called school and do school and help us keep a safe, secure learning environment daily within the school environment across the school campus. So it's been a great opening, and we hope that the school year continues, just as it has since August 16th.
It has been a good start.
It has.
The traffic's been as good as can be expected. So, thank you.
We're learning every day.
I went to the middle school drop-off, and that is smoother than ever. I mean, like, it's really moving.
Let's hope it continues to do that. And remember...
You guys are doing a good job out there.
This was six weeks pre-construction, so there's a few more changes coming. So Mr. Hood met with the city this afternoon to talk about the installation of the permanent fixture that's coming in lieu of the cones. So the cones will soon disappear, and the new curbs will be installed. So that should be an event as well. So we're hopeful that the good luck we've had so far will continue.
Great. Thank you. Pleat, update from Pleat.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Howell, one of the art teachers at the primary building. Sandy Reed, the Easton E3 Learning Lab K-12 teacher, attended the Nat Geo Inquiry National Initiative in Jackson, Wyoming over the summer in the Teton National Park in July. The week-long experience was sponsored by National Geographic, and there was only one middle school science teacher chosen from each state, so Sandy represented Ohio. The Geo Inquiry process relies on using geographic perspective, offering a unique lens to analyze space, place, and the interconnections between the human and natural world. Sandy is now a Nat Geo Ambassador and is looking forward to helping the other science teachers learn this inquiry method through the E3 Learning Lab that we have. And also, some of our sixth-grade gifted students will participate this year in a Nat Geo Inquiry project that will work closely with the city as they create the Rose Run Park. The high school marine biology class, led by Greta Manning, Greg Fletcher, Allison LaBam, and Chad Schwinnin, traveled to the Bahamas this summer. Students snuggled in the Caribbean waters, dissected marine organisms, learned to identify hundreds of species of animals and plants, and explored the rich native culture of the island, many thanks to the school board for allowing the students this great opportunity. Elizabeth Kittle, high school French teacher, participated in the June AP reading of the French exams, completing her seventh consecutive year as a grader for the college board. Over the course of seven days, Elizabeth graded approximately 630 exams. The reading experience provides an ideal forum for professional communication and personal accountability in the classroom, affording readers the opportunity to utilize French and examine their own teaching and assessment practices. DeCal, occupational therapist at the ELC, developed five lessons for the Zones of Regulation and trained the early learning center staff to implement this program building-wide. Zones of Regulation is a curriculum geared toward helping students gain skills in consciously regulating their actions, which in turn leads to increased control and problem-solving abilities. So it sounds like they're working on their R factor.
They are.
That's all we have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good start to the year. Moving on to discussion items, any board liaison reports? With none, move on to communication updates. Sorry.
Thank you, President McCullin. We'd like to begin this evening with Mr. Galloway, Director of Communications, and Mrs. Steele, Coordinator of Communications, to do a communications update for the 2018-19 school year, to share with the board and our community at large all the new things that are happening in the communications world across our school district. Mr. Galloway?
I'd like Mrs. Steele to join me up here. Thank you, President McCullin, Vice President Darrow, members of the board. This is a great opportunity for us to tell you about all of the work that we have been involved with over the course of the summer. So, Mrs. Steele, who you may have met before, also a parent in our district of three students, so she's a really good sounding board for me many times when we really want to get a parent perspective on things and maybe ways that parents might respond to communications that we send out, et cetera. So I call this the alignment of stars that happened at the end of the school year. So as you may know, when you receive our communications, Blackboard is the vendor that we use for our website, and then we were using a different tool for all of our messaging. And we started to think, why do we have this many systems? Let's find a way to sort of reduce and consolidate. So the fortunate thing was, Blackboard came out with a new system called Mass Notifications. So at the same time, they also came out with some new templates for website design. So what we had in the past, and you probably remember it well, was a website that had a lot of funky shaded colors, oranges and blues, and we thought that was really great about four years ago when we first launched it. But as time went on, the fonts felt very small to us, kind of hard to read at times. The colors didn't feel at all like New Albany, especially since we've gone through the branding. So what we did is we looked at almost, we're nine templates, I think, we had to look at to kind of evaluate what we felt would be the best fit for us. And one we came up with, it's called Scholar, that's what it's titled, through Blackboard. So we started working on how are we going to transition and refresh the site. So you may have noticed, I hopefully you've noticed, that we've done that. We flipped it in the beginning of August, actually, to get people sort of used to it and give them a little feel for it. There were other things, though, that really prompted this for us. So the state of Ohio, for example, Ohio Department of Ed, is really encouraging school districts to take a look at their sites and how are they accessible for the Americans Disability Act? How are they accessible for people who may have maybe some vision issues, impairments, et cetera? And then even for, and this is an increasing trend here, people with other native languages. So the translation feature became really important for us to try to find ways to put that front and center. So when you go to our site, you'll see that the little window in the left corner, the upper-left corner, that's really like the hub of activity. That's where you're going to see front and center that language option to translate into many languages. You'll see also the staff login there, so that's exclusively for staff when they want to log into the site to do work or access what they can access on our web. And then the quick links are the things that we felt and identified that parents and staff really need to go to most often. So like the mine apples is under there, the menus, the calendar, things of that nature. So we also still have the quick links in the upper toolbar, though, as well. So, and then, of course, the video. So we're still doing the video, and we just transitioned some of those in the past few weeks because we're back in school. So we've got some incredible content that happens every day on this campus. I do want to mention something, that over the summer, we were awarded with the Award of Excellence for our website from the National School Public Relations Association. So I actually didn't pick this plaque up, but it was mentioned to me when I went and attended their national conference this summer in Anaheim. There were categories in Web that were honorable mention, Award of Merits, and Award of Excellence. So we won the top award. And that was, there were 18 of those given across the country. So we're pretty proud of that, pretty excited.
Very good.
Thank you. And a lot of that credit definitely goes to Beth because she's my troubleshooter. I'm not the techie guy. We like to kind of do design and stuff together, but she really comes up with the solutions when we need them. So, okay, so additional features that you're going to see on the web. At the very bottom of every school page and the district page is this, my favorite feature is the collage of photos. They're actually working tiles that will take you out to really important links, whether it be for that building. So we try to be very building-specific. For instance, in intermediate school, one of those tiles goes out to the one-to-one initiative. And we thought that was a really important thing for those parents who are living in that world right now with their grades four through six student. And then on the main page, we also have a board, little tile down there if you haven't noticed it. So it takes you directly to Board Docs to learn more about what the board is doing, et cetera. Social media icons are also very present at the bottom. Those are also tailored for every school building, those that have those different tiles that we're using. And again, the larger fonts. When you go to the sub-pages, so if you go to a story page, and now when you click on that, you have a lot more white space and a lot more readability in those fonts. So that's the picture of the collage tile that I mentioned. That's on the district page at the bottom. When that is live and you hover over all of those pictures, words flash up. So it's kind of like a little screen that comes up, and then the words that direct you to wherever you want to go will be there. This is an idea more of the white space, so in our Learning Community News, we've really brightened that up with this. We were able to do a feature tile, which that last one there is probably moved up by now, but that one was about our convocation and the video we put together, and then some sub-stories will appear on the side as they get older and they move over. And then this is the social media tile, as I mentioned, at the very bottom, and all the information to find us, as well as the mapping. So here's an example, when you get to one of those sub-pages, you can just see how much brighter it is. The other thing that we like about this is the buttons are so much larger, the sidebars on the left navigation, as well as the width of it. So in the past, we were kind of constrained to this really narrow space on those sub-pages. This is just so much better for us, and we hope for families.
Do you want to talk about employee resources?
Go ahead.
Well, through the direction of Lori and Agnes in the HR department, we launched the Employee Resource Center site, which is an internal site within the website for staff-only, which they log into, that we've now compiled all the resources we think that will be very helpful for them, besides just benefits and payroll, but also links to logos and other tools that they can use, regardless of whether they're teachers or staff. So it should be helpful.
That was a pretty major project over the summer as well. So this just shows you some of the ways that those staff, again, they log in at staff login. They get this window, this is how they log into their account, et cetera. And then for them, in their toolbar, a for-staff option comes up there. So families aren't going to see that, but staff will. Just another example of our classroom portals. So a lot of our teachers have portals that we also link out to an additional site that they may have maintained for maybe many years. We also have other teachers, though, that have jumped in and kind of adopted their portal right on our website. So we encourage both. We just want their bios to be updated and their contact info updated, but we continue to work with staff. And we also know that from our, like, our app, when we track analytics, classroom portals is the number-one thing parents are going to. So they want to know about their teacher, especially when they find out who that person will be, et cetera. The mobile app is also being refreshed, so this will launch again. What do you think, Beth?
This week?
This week. So if you've already downloaded the app, you're fine. You don't have to do anything, but there are going to be increased opportunities for parent engagement with the app. They're going to actually be able to log in, and please correct me if I get any of this wrong. They're going to be able to log in. They'll also have features where they can dive into their students' information. So they can know if there may be library books that are due. They'll be able to see, obviously, the lunch menus, which they already can, and get into Power School and see that information.
Class schedules.
Class schedules. Yeah. And then another exciting thing, and this is kind of delving into our mass notifications. With that, we are able to retool all of the templates for the buildings. So you remember the newswire look, and it's a little darker up there and that sort of thing. We really refreshed all of this. But another feature that we have with mass notifications is teachers will have access to this as well. And it's a form where all of the parent information, the student information, is built into the account. The teacher is never going to see that. They're not going to see a student's phone number. They're not going to see the parent's phone number, but they can pull up their information when they select that name or they select the class of students, and they can mass notify their entire class if they want, all of those parents. And the parent can reply to the teacher as well. They have options to also text. They can do email, and they can do those sort of simultaneously, but the text, they do have to limit, of course, to 140 characters. So we have teachers that are very excited about this because they will not have to now build a list just of email addresses and then BCC it to their entire family, class of family. So just a reminder of all of our ways to engage. We've done this with all of our staff so far. Well, we've got two more buildings, I think, to hit, but just a reminder of social media, media relations that we do. The Peach Star is still very popular with parents. And then the hashtag, some of those have been renewed and updated for this year of how different buildings are kind of like gathering their information, sharing on social media, et cetera. Again, I think the reinforcement with the branding that we've done, I don't know if you've ever seen the actual folder of all of the images that they've created for us, but there are lots of options for staff to use when they want to tailor something or use some of these design elements. So it's really exciting. And it's exciting just to see the colors, because the colors really work together now. So again, brand consistency, we're really pushing for that. Here's an idea of how we've kind of modernized and mimicked the look of the website onto our letterheads for both the high school. That's an example of their standard letterhead that they'll be able to send out. This is an example of how we're changing up newswire. And then this is an example of another feature that comes with Blackboard that's called Smore. Smore is something that a lot of our teachers have been hip to for a long time because it's a very creative way to create a newsletter that is interactive. It's responsive on your phone, to matter what size of phone that you have. So we're starting to implement this with our school buildings. So they can either use Smore, or they can use that standard letterhead. We think definitely the primary intermediate are going to jump right on this because it's kind of fun and interactive, but we'll help the other buildings, too, if they'd like to incorporate. And then finally, what we want to also reinforce is, this is at the bottom of all of those templates or letterheads, the Safe School Helpline. While that may change the look eventually, we don't know, but we've talked them about maybe modernizing it a bit, that is always going to be present on every communication that goes out. And you may have noticed, it's on the toolbar, too, on our website, right up front. So we want people to see that, access it easily. And of course, that's used for everything from maybe a threat notification, but also for a student who may be concerned about a friend. So it's used for a multiple variety of things, bullying, et cetera, and reporting. And then finally, also, those social media links are going to be there as well. So the one thing I was going to do is try to toggle over to the web, just to show you a few other features. So when we talk back to the ADA compliance, so if you haven't noticed this yet, I think this is incredibly nifty, and it's also very helpful. So if you have some vision impairments, et cetera, this toggle will change the contrast and the colors on our site. So as I hit that, you can see that it converted everything to black and white. This is going to be incredibly helpful for someone that has a vision impairment as you scroll down because of that high contrast. And I just think it's kind of cool, actually, when you come down to the tiles. So this is that interactive tile area that I had mentioned, and as I said, as you hover over these, it will switch out to say, here's where I'm going to go with this. This is where it's going to take me, in the classroom curriculum facility use. There's the board. So it's just really exciting, like, what opportunities we have with the new site, and we're just pleased we could share it with you. So any questions that you have for us, or...
This is great. I've obviously been on the website. I love the new look. I love that we've been able to update it without having, you know, you haven't had to build something completely new, at least on your end. You mentioned the quick links and areas that you think that people are most likely to select. Is that something that we're continually, for the set in general, what are we doing to track visits, track page views? And then has those changed? Are you going to change the quick links going forward?
I think it just depends on the feedback we get. And we are looking at doing another communication survey this year because it's been two years. So I think Michael and I have talked about that. I think it's definitely time. And as well, like, a lot of things have changed. Like, we want to know how they're using the app, for instance. Are they using the app more than they're using the website? Because we're learning that a lot of parents, the phone is their computer right now, just because of the access and their mobile, they're maybe in the pickup line waiting for their student after school, whatever, they can just access it. So we do have analytics built into the website. We can go to the back end and see, for instance, just the homepage for a year period has had 513,075 visits, individual visits, and then that rolls down to total page views of 477,000. So we know that there's high traffic. The other cool thing, and in this little graph I can show you, is it shows you the time of year. And then, as you see this line, you'll see when the people are really checking things out and for what reason possibly. So back to school, you're going to see a spike. Maybe after the winter break, you might see a spike because what do I need to know for the new school, the new part of the semester, or what have you? So it's pretty fascinating to go back there and check that out. There's a little bit of a dive then at the end of the school year, which is obviously going to happen, I think, because people are going to check out. So, but we do have the opportunity to do that. In terms of the quick links, Beth, can we actually, we can actually monitor each of those in the click view and that kind of thing? So, yeah, but we kind of thought, what are the things, and we polled some families, you know, what are the things that you really need to go to?
Yeah.
What are your must-haves? So...
What's I'm curious is, depending on the time of year or whatever, whether you see differences in the types of pages that people are visiting and then the ability to move those up.
Right.
Another question I had was, I mean, obviously, we have a little bit more control over the website itself, but what are you seeing in terms of engagement on social media versus people coming to our site? Because I'm guessing a lot of the ways that people will see things that we're doing are either through the email or stuff that they're just catching on their social media feeds.
Yeah. So my secret with social media has been after we launched Instagram, to use the link feature from Instagram. So I don't know if everyone knows, but Facebook owns Instagram. So you can link that Instagram account out to a Facebook account for the district, and that's typically what I'll do. I don't send it to Twitter, which you can, but since Twitter is not connected to Instagram in that way, you can't send an image with it. So it just comes over as text. That's worthless. Like, people are not going to even engage if there's not some sort of image or video associated with it. So we'll use Twitter differently, but see, we're still relying, and we're looking forward to the next communication survey, because I'm still relying on some of that data we gathered last time. And if you remember, Twitter wasn't huge with our parent population, so I haven't paid as much attention to that and cultivated it. Instagram, I think, has really soared, though. I think that, well, we're getting kids, but now kids know their parents are getting on there, too, so we know what happens then.
Yeah.
But I just think it's exciting. I think the kids, they want to see what their friends are doing. I'll tell you what's really fun for me, and Beth doesn't always get to see this because she's not always out on campus with me, when I walk into a room or a building or wherever where those kids gather, and I have, so I use a gimbal to record all of this video. So it kind of, you put your phone in there, you turn it on, pulls your phone up, and it creates the balance and the motion. When kids see me coming, is this going to be on the website? That's the first thing they say to them. And to me, that's exciting. And then I have a, I have a way, I'm not an educator, you guys know that, but I have a way to kind of curb some behavior then. Because what they'll do is, I'll start seeing craziness, and there's signs that they make. I don't know any of those. I've Googled signs, and some of them scare me. So what I can do is say, hey, I'm not going to put down a website if that's what you're going to do. So then, oh, okay. Because they want to put their best face forward, so it's kind of interesting. But like, sometimes I just can tell, okay, this class is going to be way too rowdy. This isn't going to work out. But the teachers, the principals, they all really help me try to identify the opportunities. And I'm, believe me, there are everyday opportunities in this district, so it's exciting.
Great.
I think it looks great. I love the, I love the changes. I was just noticing, and I heard you mention that it'll be optimized for an app coming soon, but I noticed that there's video playing when you've got it accessed via a PC. It doesn't play when I access it via my browser on my iPad.
On the iPad? Oh, it works on mine. I'm not sure. What are you on, Safari, or how are you accessing it?
Safari.
I don't know if it could be a connection just in here, but I've played it before on my iPad.
Just the background, just that very same background video?
Right there?
Here's the stagnant.
Yeah.
Just curious. I love it. I just, I just...
It could be a server issue. I mean, honestly, when I'm home and I open up my personal Mac, there are times when it will freeze. So the video is uploaded to Vimeo, which is like a YouTube, but it's more educationally-oriented. It's not as, you don't have to worry about ads. So that's really why we use Vimeo, because we don't really want those pop-up ads.
It's not a complaint, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I still like the better navigation on the pages. I like some of the fresh pages. I like how it's better. I mean...
We'll pay attention to that, though, because I've noticed on my iPad, it does work. So we'll check that out. So, yeah. Anything else?
It looks great.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
The one question I had is, is there any shortcut to Schoology?
Schoology, teachers, some teachers use it, some teachers don't, so it's really linked up through their portal. If you go to a teacher classroom portal, there'll be a link to Schoology. I know it's difficult for parents to kind of get in there unless they give you a code or whatnot, so that's why it's done. But I think there might be one building that does have a direct link under for students or for families that we could certainly, you know, if that's needed at a certain level, we can add that, too, so...
That was the only thing that I felt I had trouble finding. But I know, like, at the high school, Lauren's on five different things, so it's not consistent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hey, I got the play. I pushed the play button.
Get it, push play.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go.
Actually, it doesn't start right away, then you push the little pause-play button.
It's navigational, yeah.
Yeah.
We had that little hiccup with the old site, and we thought that they remedied that. But we'll keep talking to them, you know, there's issues.
Before we talk about the Continuous Improvement Plan, I do want to note publicly that today is Patrick Galloway's birthday. So happy birthday. We're not going to sing.
And he's spending it with you.
We're not singing. You can sing, I'm not going to sing. But thank you for the presentation.
He's spending it with all of us. Good evening. Next on the agenda this evening is the Continuous Improvement Plan conversation for 2018-2019. So based upon work to date by the administrative team, we're going to present topics for conversation with the Board of Education this evening. I think the easiest way to do this is to go through each section and we'll pause to have conversation with the board to solicit input and feedback before we continue on to the next section of the Continuous Improvement Plan, so that we don't have to rewind at the end and come all the way back to the beginning. So we're gonna do this in stages as we go through the presentation. So in preparation for the release of the local report card in September, we are forecasting that there is clearly an increase in academic achievement across the board, across the school district, based upon the data that Jess Mamaius shared with you, um, at our last Board of Education meeting. So we have no reason to believe that that's going to change based upon this weekend's update from the department, um, into the secure data center that we have access to. So we are absolutely confident that our student achievement, um, levels will increase as a result of performance in two thousand seventeen, eighteen across the board in the school district. Therefore, as we look towards the commitment to excellence, um, I'm going to forecast that I believe we have achieved the top five percent in our new ranking that we will receive in September. So I'm that confident that the work that we're sharing with you this evening is in preparation for the fact that that ranking is actually indeed going to demonstrate that in September. So presuming that I have the crystal ball and we are right, um, we wanna talk about the context of looking at the commitment to excellence, so, um. Go ahead.
I don't think we should just blow past that.
Um. Well, you're gonna talk.
I know, but I don't think we should just move past that so quickly. I mean, the reason we're having this conversation is that if you are correct, and, you know, we'll assume for the purposes of this comment that you're, you're correct, that we'll be in the top five. That was our five-year goal two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I'll, I'll certainly wait until the, the.
It's official.
Till the official, results are official, but we were having this conversation because we achieved our five-year goal. So now we're talking about what our next five-year goal is that we will achieve in the next two years.
Correct. It's an incredible accomplishment. It truly is. Um, staff, everyone across the school district, kids and parents have worked tremendously hard, but I truly do believe, standing here this evening, as I told you before, I do believe we've met the five-year golden two. So if that's true, to Mr. Darrow's point, um, what happens next? So in our efforts to try to create a conversation with the board, we're proposing the following. So, and you see the strike-throughs in the highlights. So the New Albany Plain Local School District is committed to creating a culture of accountability that achieves the best academic development outcomes for each student. That is the statement of purpose. Clearly, we're not recommending any changes to the statement of purpose based upon the work that's been done to date related to the wonderful statement of purpose that creates clarity and focus for the district. However, then we continue. The district aspires by September, and I put twenty twenty-three. So to Mr. Darrow's point, what do you want the new five-year goal to be? I'm proposing, based upon conversations with the leadership team, that we would say that we will be ranked in the top ten or higher of all public school districts, um, for student achievement in the state of Ohio as reported by the Ohio Department of Education Performance Index Ranking. So our initial goal is to be in the top five percent, which would be number thirty or higher. I believe we've achieved that. We will know for sure in September. We believe the next goal that we should aspire towards in the next five years, and hopefully sooner than five years, is to be in the top ten or higher. We're gonna pause here and have a conversation about the commitment to excellence.
So two years ago, we were ranked what?
Sixty-fourth.
Okay, right.
And then we went to thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, and we don't know yet.
And this year's thirty-two or higher was our goal.
Right, and we think we'll be in the top twenty.
I think we'll be in the mid to top twenty.
Okay, so if we're, let's just say we're in the middle, twenty-five. That's hopeful, right? Um, then in the next five years, to get into the top ten is a movement of fifteen spots.
Fifteen of the highest achieving school districts in the state of Ohio.
For clarity. I know that, I know that. That's, that's why I'm bringing this up.
On behalf of all of us.
I, hey, right, let's go, people. No, I, I just want, I just wanna make this clear, because some people would say, wait a minute, you were sixty-fourth, and you got all the way up to twenty-five in two years. You went forty, you went thirty-nine spots.
We've worked hard, and we will continue to work hard.
So I just, I just want to, for clarity's sake, not that it, not that it was easy to go from sixty-four to thirty, or twenty-five, or whatever, but as we go higher, which we all know we can do, it will be harder. And so we're not necessarily by having this discussion suggesting that we're not going to work harder or we're not going to expect great things. It's just that as you reach the top, the air gets thinner.
There are school districts that are separated by a tenth, one hundred, or one one-thousandth of a percentage point, um, as you climb the ladder. So based upon last year's rankings, clearly I haven't seen this year's rankings, but we did look at last year's. And there are school districts that are a thousandth of a point apart from each other based upon the ranking.
Is there anything that you think we need to do differently now to hit that number?
We're gonna talk about that, but not tonight. That'll be part of, after we see what comes back on the report card. The leadership team right now is working at the building level to put together the plans, um, that will actually implement the new Continuous Improvement Plan and the specific work. But you're aware of some of it. College prep math, as an example, in grade six through twelve is purposeful. The Lucy Cockings Writing Initiative that's being implemented at the elementary level is specific to help us for areas that we've identified, um, that additional support is needed to have, help students, um, continue to improve in the writing portions of the requirements. So we will give you a laundry list of things, um, in September. Um, we've worked on those. Some of them are already underway and being implemented in classrooms today, but we'll summarize those once we finalize the CIP in September.
So the commitment to excellence is, um, is a long-term aspirational target, correct? Five-year aspirational target. Um, benchmark number one, as I read ahead, sorry, I'm skipping ahead, it's kinda the way it is. Um, benchmark one defines it very specifically.
Correct.
Right? So that will be for the coming year. But I'd like to be in the top ten. I, I think that, that is a good, uh, a five-year aspirational goal. I'm curious what, uh, what you think and what others think of, uh, adding to that aspiration for a longer term, that our long-term objective is to aspire to become and remain the number one district in the state of Ohio.
By when?
It's long-term aspiration.
So it's not time-bound?
Nope.
Yeah. As long as it's not time-bound, I'm fine with it, because I think it is an aspiration. I think we're capable of it. Um, clearly through our students that we see every single day and the performance that they have, um, it's an aspiration that we someday will achieve. I do not think it's time-bound to two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to say we're gonna be number one by two thousand and twenty-three, but I also know who these other high-achieving school districts are. And again, it can be a tenth, one-hundredth, or a thousandth of a decimal point that separates the two school districts. But aspirationally, without time-bound, I think number one is someday possible.
To, to John's point and your point, um, the, it does get incrementally more challenging as you approach number one. Um, I'm typically very focused on time-bound goals, because I think those are the only ones that get achieved. However, our benchmarks are the, are really the specific time-bound, uh, goals. Those are the ones that we work toward each year. Those change each year. So having the five-year goal that is time-bound and having the aspirational goal that ties into our statement of purpose where we define best as not good, not better, not incremental, not second, third, or fifth, but the best, number one. So I thought we've earned and, and, well, we've earned the opportunity to be able to, to actually strive for number one, something that when we first set out on this journey two and a half years ago, not everybody believed. But I think, I think we've proven that, that this team is capable of reaching for greatness and actually achieving it, so.
We can talk about it. Other feedback on the commitment to excellence? The focus, um, the focus remains the same, um, in the Continuous Improvement Plan. All employees will be accountable for implementing research-based practices, including a rigorous and aligned curriculum, common assessments, focused instruction, and data-driven decisions to achieve the best academic and developmental outcomes for every student within a fiscally sustainable budget. We do not see this changing. Um, it is part of the backbone of the school district, um, and it is the focus for what everybody does every single day to support students and the method by which we will accomplish it. Does anyone wish the wordsmith the focus? We would presume not, but I thought I would ask. Benchmark number one, to Mr. Darrow's point, this is the specific for the increase that would be associated to academic achievement. So clearly, until the release of the report card in, um, September, we can't establish what the growth goal would be specifically for ranking. Um, so we're recommending the wording stays the same, and then we fill in the blanks. Um, for the highlighted section, increase the district performance rank as compared to all Ohio school districts on the local report card from number thirty-eight to whatever our current number will be in September or better. Um, so incrementally, we'll have to decide how much growth is necessary. This past year, we used the barometer of at least one percent, so we would move six school districts. I don't know what that is until we know what our ranking is. Because back to the conversation we just had on the commitment to excellence, the higher we climb, the harder it gets. Um, so we have to understand what that is, once we understand what the ranking is, um, for the state.
I know from being in the Indian Hills School District, once they get that rank, they fight really hard to hang on to it, too.
I would agree, as will we.
Yes.
And thirty-two, again, was the five percent line.
Yeah, well, thirty was that, number thirty or higher actually would be the five percent. So this current year's goal did not get us to five percent. I believe, based upon conversations for our current Performance Index score, that we will be above number thirty statewide. So we will be in the top five percent, thus why I recommend the change to commitment to excellence. And again, that'll be official in September. Any questions on benchmark one? Academic achievement has to stay first and foremost as a goal in the school district. Number two, facilitate a year worth, a year or more of growth for every year of instruction. So we are not recommending any changes to this. This is the value-added component, um, related to the local report card. Um, there is conversations currently within the State Department, the state legislature. The value added is gonna be phased out in the next two years. So given the unknown of what's actually going to happen based upon the legislative action, we're recommending that it just stays the same. And fundamentally, it represents the conversers, conversation you heard me say in the past, that every student in our school district deserves at least a year's worth of instruction. And that's really what this demonstrates, is that overall, holistically in our school district, that we demonstrate at least a year's worth of growth or higher on the district component grade measuring progress of all students as calculated by ODE. Where this gets confusing, if you recall from when I presented on this in the past, a year's worth of growth and value added on the report card is actually a letter grade of a C. So it's just how the grading scale works in value added. We clearly want higher than that, but a minimum year's worth of growth in the state of Ohio's computation system is actually a C on the report card. Any questions about growth? We'll get to gap closure in a second. This is not gap closure. This is specifically growth.
Is there any, um, group where we consistently are not meeting this benchmark?
For value added overall, no. We meet it as a school district, um, with a B or higher. Um, in the subgroup data for gap closure, there's some opportunities, yes. Because it's going away, or in likelihood going away based upon legislative action, um, I think that we leave it the same. It's understood currently by faculty and staff to understand what it means to get a year's worth of growth, that every student should benefit from a year's worth of instruction. That's really what it represents, that you come to school in August, when you leave in May, you should demonstrate that you've had at least a year's worth of growth through instruction, um, and your performance in the school district. Any other questions or comments on benchmark two? Benchmark three is gap closure. So this was changed for this current school year. So when the report card comes out in September, as Jess shared with you last month, the computations for gap closure actually did change for identified subgroups. So we're recommending that it stays the same. Um, it's a higher benchmark of a B or better on the local report card. To Mrs. Kalanowski's question, there's specific subgroup data that's been disaggregated that we're going through now to try to put additional supports, interventions, or opportunities in place to help kids in a specific subgroup that underperformed. Um, last month, or earlier in the month, at the work session when Jess reported on the local report card, she used the example in the high school data for students with disabilities in mathematics. So there was underperformance in students with disabilities. One of our subgroups specifically for African-American males that are socio-economically disadvantaged also had underperformance in portions of the school district data. So we're going through now, although there was marked improvement in their scores, they're still underperforming compared to their peers. So we're trying to put additional supports in place, interventions, and/or, example was high school. If you're currently taking algebra or geometry and you are identified, you could be in the connections course, where you're double-dipped, you're in class for math, but then you also have a period that's also assigned to you as a second resource class, that you're going to math lab to work specifically with a teacher for a second opportunity to get additional instruction on mathematics. Um, we also have writing intervention for ELAs. So English Language Arts Intervention also exists as an example, both at the middle school and at the high school. So math and English Language Arts are the two dominant areas that are getting additional supports, interventions, or services based upon underperformance in a gap group.
Is this the first year that we're doing that, or second year?
This will be the third year for implementation. The eighteen-nineteen year will be the third year of implementation. Second year at the middle school, correct, Mrs. LeBeau? First year at the middle school.
And do we feel like it's making a difference?
Yeah, we've seen improvement when you go back to the Algebra I and Geometry scores overall. On the report card, there was an increase, um, but there's still opportunities. Seventh grade, um, mathematics did not meet the indicator, although there was improvement. Remember, two years ago, we were thirty-seven percent. We're now at the seventy-fourth percentile, eighty percent's required for overall passage. So there's marked improvement by using interventions and supports that are actually being put in place. But again, it's identifying what each individual student may need, because although it's a second period of math lab, it's not one-size-fits-all instruction. It's tailored to meet the needs of the individual student.
And how are the students chosen to go to that intervention?
They're assigned based upon, if you're in Algebra I Connections and Geometry Connections as the course that you're currently enrolled in, you get a second class automatically assigned to your schedule. It's a requirement for the course. Um, beyond that, using the math testing data or the OAS, um, the state testing, um, Mrs. LeBeau as an example, identify specific groups of students that are then put into during Eagle Period, um, almost like a structured study center, that you're assigned to that specific location because we've identified that you need additional supports. It's not a life sentence. If you demonstrate marked improvement and proficiency, then you ultimately don't have that assignment.
So it's not an option?
It's not an option. You are assigned because you have an opportunity for us to assist you, because you have an area, um, that you're at risk in. Our goal is to increase achievement growth. Um, to do that, we have to provide interventions and supports. Any questions about gap closure? Okay, benchmark number four. Um, the first part, um, we recommend stays the same, and it's continue to earn a grade of A for the graduation rate component on the local report card. Um, the state of Ohio did eliminate the exemption opportunity that was available for the eighteen points that required beginning for the class for graduation with class of two thousand and eighteen. That is no longer an exception. That's permitted in state statute. Um, we're currently having conversations, and I'm just gonna be transparent about it. I don't believe this should change, but our graduation rate, if the state does not provide an exemption, and I'm gonna use specifically an example with students with disabilities, if you have a cognitive disability within the school district today, and you've been taking the standardized test for the state, if you have yet to pass, there's currently no exemption for you under state statute that existed previously. The only exemption is if I exempt the student based upon the IEP, um, so that he or she would be eligible for graduation for a cognitive purpose. If we give the student the exemption, they will count against the graduation rate in the school district. That did not happen prior to this current school year, because there was an exemption permissible by state statute. That has now been removed by the General Assembly. So if we do give a student an exemption, and the law does not change in Ohio, um, which I believe, to be honest with you, standing here, the student will likely earn the exemption because it's appropriate, based upon their learning, um, disability that's documented, that it will count against the graduation rate. So it's what's in the best interest of the student, and if necessary, I will take the hit on the graduation rate to help that student.
Why did they change the law that way?
It's about the eighteen points that are required, and the goal is, or it's aspirational for the state that they wanted to give the one-year reprieve to let students go into the requirement. But beginning with the class of two thousand and eighteen, that was the last exception. So two thousand and nineteen, you have to have the eighteen points. We currently had fifty-eight seniors at the high school that are identified that are currently at risk for not having eighteen points. Um, sixteen of them, Mrs. Saunders, is that right, are students with disabilities, um, specifically. And Mr. Kramer and the school counselors and the other administrators at the high school, um, with Jess Mamaius's help and Sheila's help, have been meeting with families to go through what is required to earn the diploma, um, at the end of the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. And aside from sixteen students, and not all sixteen students with students with disabilities will qualify for an exception, um, that's permissible under the, um, ability for me to say they have a cognitive issue. So there will be students right now that are at risk. There's plans, interventions that have been in place. We've documented everything with the families. The kids clearly understand what the requirements are, and we'll do everything we can to get them to the point where they can walk across the stage and be part of the class of two thousand and nineteen. But the previous exception that was permissible under state statute is now gone. And aside from the students with disabilities issue, you will not be permitted to graduate if you have not earned at least eighteen points through the state system. Regardless of all that, we still believe as a high-achieving school district that we should maintain the A for the graduation rate. Um, the other funky thing that's part of the graduation rate that you may recall, it's cohort-based, so it's the number of students that enter ninth grade have to walk four years later. If you move to another school district, regardless of the fact that the state can prove it, they count against us. That's why we don't have a hundred percent graduation rate, because we have transient population where someone will leave during their four years. If you did not commence four years later, you count against us because it's how the state calculates graduation rate. Don't fix that. I, it's how it is. No one in the state has a hundred percent, because at least one kid moves sometime during four years. In our case, we have several. The second piece for the class of two thousand and eighteen will earn an ACT mean score that's at least twenty percent higher than state average, as reported by the ACT College Writing higher than state average, as reported by the ACT College Writingist Report in September, we have not received yet. So you will recall that we started actually testing all juniors as an opportunity within the state, because the state does provide that. So they were seated when they were juniors, but they did take, they have the opportunity to also test when they were seniors. So our goal is that the 2018 class will be at least 20% higher than the state mean. We do not know what that is yet. It will come. We typically see it three days before public release, when it's embargoed for communication purposes. It normally comes towards the latter part of this week, but Mrs. Mamiya and I have yet to see it. So it is out by September, we just do not have it yet.
Do you know what last year's was?
25.4? 25.2.
So I had a comment, and I know Phil said it shouldn't go, and I just want to back up on the agenda on the commitment tax ones. I apologize for my casual.
Okay.
I don't really lounge around.
You have a terrible, you have a whole ankle issue going on, so we don't wish you for that.
I wanted to just, again, I keep saying I don't want to count our chickens before they hatch, but I want to say thank you to everybody in this room, all the leadership team, the teachers, I'll say it every time we talk about it, because this is incredible. They're going to be in the 20 to 30 in the two years. We were aiming for this in five years. I know when many of us got involved a few years ago looking at finances, and then I looked at academics, I'm like, there's no way this district should not be in the top 10% in the state, at least. And for you guys to do this in two years, every school bus driver, teacher, I mean, I'll get on the stump speech and sing it from the, I'll mix my analogies here too, so. It's the drugs, really.
Not paying medication for broken ankle. For the record, broken ankle.
This is really exciting stuff. I am on a little medication for, I've got a broken ankle and a torn ligament potentially here, but in all seriousness, thank you, everybody. This has been an effort over the past several years to come together collectively behind the statement of purpose that you've already read for us, and the team has heard ad infinitum. So the fact that we're talking about being in the top 20 to 30 after two years, I'm just thrilled for the district, for every kid in this district, for what it means for them and their future. So I know it's going to be hard to hang on to. I know we're aiming for number one. I like the fact that Phil had that, it's inspirational, because you're right, several years ago, we talked about being the best, and we backed off a little bit to say, let's take it incrementally, and you guys have just knocked the cover off the ball, so thank you. Which brings me to the next topic, which when I looked at the district's performance three years ago, that was the second stat I pulled up, which was the ACT score. And I think it's fantastic, the gap closure that we talked about on the previous slide, to me, that's like the gap extender. You know, how do we get those in the district where their best academic and developmental outcomes is to go on to college and their college of choice? How do we really take that to the next level? And I know we're still waiting on this year's results, but that would be one of the things that I think about. You asked us to think about these things in advance, and I was going to give you a call, but I didn't get to that with my broken ankle. What can we do as a district to really extend, you know, that score? That's a standardized score, yes, I know we have standardized testing, that's not everything about academia, about the education you receive in New Albany, but that is a measure that gets looked at nationally for college admissions. I'd really like to see us as a board and as a leadership community and our teaching team think about, how do we, how do we take that to the next level? Is that, maybe we're not at the 20% just yet, but that's probably not where I want to be, I think New Albany's capable of being better than 20%, higher than the rest of the state, so I'll get off my soapbox now. I can't stand, so sit back on my soapbox.
Thank you for your positive commentary. It's very much appreciated on behalf of the entire staff. It really is a team effort. People have worked extremely hard, including the parents and the kids that are here every day. We will have this conversation related to ACT when we get the report. It's still on our radar, and in all likelihood, we would still recommend there's going to be some type of an ACT goal that's included in Benchmark 4, to the points that Mr. Neumoff made, that it is a nationally normed score that's understood by the population at large. Parents understand it is the college admission ticket, so we have to understand what we're doing to continue to raise the bar, to help kids perform at higher levels on the ACT. So we will have that conversation with Dr. Hamilton and Mr. Kramer, and we'll give you specifics back to what I said to Mrs. Kalanowski in September when we know the outcome. So I need to know where we're at to talk about where we're going to go next.
Mr. Sories, on that, and just for clarification for anybody who's watching, you talked about making the ACT available to juniors to take, if the state does that.
Yes.
Do all schools participate in that? Do all schools test their juniors?
Over 90% of the kids statewide are taking the ACT. There are about 10% of schools that might have chosen the SAT. You have the choice of ACT versus SAT. Based upon the number of students that stay in-state, we recommend ACT administration, because the majority of our students do stay in-state, and it is the preferred choice for most higher education institutions in the state of Ohio. So we chose ACT based upon the percentage of kids that are staying. Doesn't mean a kid can't take the SAT, they can. We would actually encourage kids to take the ACT or SAT multiple times. There are also refresher courses or courses that can help you understand that the ACT as a test, because part of it is understanding the instrument. It is not the same as the state assessment, it's a completely different test. So you really have to understand, and most kids will go through that process, particularly to Mr. Neumoff's point, I mean, the current benchmark for Ohio State is to get through the computer clearance is a 28 composite through super scoring. So you don't even get through the first batch of the clearance at OSU, you get waitlisted if you don't have a 28 going through the door. So we're at 25.2, according to Mrs. Mamiya, and I trust her implicitly. I said four, it's two, I'm sure, but that .2 matters. Any other questions on Benchmark 4? Comments? Okay, the last three are the ones I actually think that you can actually do something with perhaps this evening, for input and finalization, so that we can narrow the list for September based upon the first four. Benchmark 5 is enhanced school culture and social emotional well-being. It's administer age-appropriate student surveys to measure the percentage of students who feel safe at school, support and have at least one staff member to approach with problems. I've eliminated the word climate, because the surveys we're actually proposing to administer are not just climate-based. We survey other topics beyond student climate. So I'm actually recommending we strike the word climate for 2018-19. Our current conversations are that we would administer three surveys, so we don't have survey fatigue amongst the students, but presently via Hanover, which is the third party that we've elected to use for survey administration. The new one for 2018 is actually the first one. The Student Technology Engagement and Competency Survey would be administered in grades four through six, based upon the one-to-one initiative. So we do believe that there's pre- and post-survey information we need from kids to understand the reality of their world related to technology, based upon the implementation of the one-to-one initiative. So that is new for the 2018-19 school year. The second survey, this would be our third year for administration, for substance usage. Sixth grade is no longer included, because we only have grades seven through 12 at the middle school and high school. So we are recommending to continue with the substance usage survey, that is valuable data to get back to help with well-being or wellness programming and initiatives that take place across the school district, based upon the data we actually learn from the kids. So the substance usage survey, we believe, is still viable and very helpful in helping us target specific well-being programs for age-appropriate students. The third one was the pilot that we actually had an opportunity to participate in last year, and we did the social emotional learning survey through Hanover, and it was administered in grades three through 12. There is conversation from Hanover about expanding a K through 2 version that would have smiley faces or happy faces, or a different way to survey the students, based upon the social emotional questions that are being asked. But the survey we did administer last year was grades three through 12. We're recommending for longitudinal purposes that we continue to participate in the SEL survey by Hanover, because it actually gave us far more data than the 24 questions that were available through Gallup. So one of the questions we actually asked Hanover was to the longitudinal impact associated to the SEL survey, and what's the comparison group that potentially could exist? There's only about 10 schools right now that Hanover's working with, because it was a pilot in 2017-18, to do the SEL survey, but they're confident that other school districts may come online. Regardless of that, if we administer it for the second year, we can get longitudinal comparison data between the two years that we've actually administered it here in New Albany, to understand the SEL, the social emotional learning questions and the responses by kids. For survey fatigue purposes, we're recommending that the Gallup survey, that was the 24 questions in grades five through 12, be eliminated. It is no longer free this year from Gallup. There's a service fee of a couple thousand dollars, it's actually being added by Gallup for the changes in the national norming that they're doing, and the reporting structures. So because we already have the SEL in place, we're recommending from a leadership perspective that we actually continue the social emotional learning survey for this year. Any questions related to Benchmark 5 or comments?
Michael, would you share a little bit about how you have, how the district has used the previous survey data to help kids?
So I use substance usage as an example. So based upon the feedback received by kids, either for, from awareness perspective and education perspective, or an actual usage perspective, we work with the school counselors and the well-being initiative within the school district specifically, and the Adam H Board to actually solicit a resource to add to our school district this year focused on alcohol and other drugs. And it's a prevention clinician that's been hired through Concord, that's being paid for through a grant that we applied for and were successful in receiving from Adam H, to put a full-time alcohol and other drug prevention clinician on the school campus to work with students and families that may be experiencing substance usage issues. Either personally, as an individual student within our school district, or a student who's coping with a family member at home, could be a mom, could be a dad, could be a sister, could be a brother, that's using drugs or alcohol for inappropriate choices and the impact it's having to them on a daily basis for social emotional learning supports. So we've tried to target, there's three new programs coming that are related to alcohol and other drugs that are targeted to specific grade levels, that the new person will actually be implementing in our school district in 2018-19, through Mr. Hood and the Student Services Team, the school counselors, the Concord Prevention Clinicians, and the Mental Health Specialist. So over the course of the last 24 months, we've been fortunate, because we've been very active implying for grants. Beyond our school counselors, we have three full-time mental health specialists that are on our school campus, based upon the data that we received from the surveys and kids telling us, this is what I'm coping with every single day, and I can't do math because I'm not thinking about math, I'm thinking about this. And I have this going on in my life, and I need somebody to help me with this, because that this baggage comes to school with them every single day. So we're trying to put just-in-time resources in place through the use with the building principals, assistant principals, the school counselors, the mental health specialist, and the prevention clinicians, to meet the needs of kids on a daily basis. And we, they're not all in crisis, but we do have kids on campus that are in crisis. And we create supports for them to try to keep their life as normal as possible, because some of the problems they're experiencing are not their own. It could be a mom or a dad at home that's creating this environment that they're then trying to grow up in and still survive. We want them to thrive at school, so we're trying to create resources for them to be successful. Those are a couple examples. There's 21 wellness programs across the school district that are curriculum-based, specifically based upon the results of the survey that have been implemented.
So to your comment about, this is one of the benchmarks you think we can take, might be able to take some action on tonight, one of the ways I try to think about whether or not goals are appropriate for a particular organization, is how well those goals drive behavior that reinforces those goals. So to bring this particular topic full circle, when we set out the statement of purpose and we're clear that we're looking for the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student, when I look at the data that we got from Jess last week, or last meeting, and I commented on how valuable that data is in helping individual educators, building administrators, and district leaders overall, identify where to put resources and how to affect change. When I look at this benchmark, and I look at a particular survey that you think is more useful, and hearing your feedback on how you apply the data, while I may be a fan of Gallup in other circumstances, in this case, it's clear you've analyzed the value that you receive from these surveys versus the Gallup survey, and believe that it's a better instrument to give you actionable data. If that's the case, I don't see any reason to differ from your view.
That is the recommendation of the leadership team. We believe that the SEL survey provided clear-cut data that was far more usable than the nationally normed data we receive from Gallup. So, good point. Any other questions or comments on 5? Ms. Jenkins is going to talk about number 6. You'll need the two other single pieces of paper that we provided with your handout.
So Benchmark 6 is to demonstrate sustainable fiscal management, and our recommendation is to reduce the fiscal year 19, five-year, or yeah, five-year forecast line item 4.50 total expenditures by at least $627,000, resulting in a 1% reduction total expenditure to positively increase the district's five-year forecast. So we wanted to kind of take a step back to say, here's where we were, and this is how we got to the $627,000. And fiscal year 19 is the current year, so what we're saying is, we want to reduce our current year budget by that amount. So if you look at the sheet that we've passed out, that is a, it's a budget-to-actual comparison. So I actually like to go back to October, because that's, the October forecast is the first one that we filed for the year. We updated in May, but I don't consider that your original budget. So the first column is fiscal year 18 as of October, and then the second column is actuals as of June 30th, where we ended. And this is also going to help us take care of our financial, monthly financial report. July's board meeting is too early in the month for us to be closed and have our actuals, so we'll go through this. A lot of it, we've already actually talked about as we've gone through monthly financials throughout the year. So you see the $2.7 million in general property tax was more than what we anticipated. We talked about this probably in May, where we had increases in our TIF revenue of $1.5 million, we had reappraisal increase of $235,000, and then we had the state and local tax higher than what we anticipated at just over $1 million. At that time, we weren't sure whether any of, any or all of that would be continuing. I have had conversations now with the Franklin County Auditor's Office. They do anticipate that a portion of the TIF increase, the $1.5 million, and then the reappraisal increase will be ongoing, so we'll work that into our upcoming October five-year forecast. Other areas that are significant in revenue is line, well, it's not line, so it's the other, all other revenues. So we were over-collected in that, higher than what we anticipated, by $364,000. The drivers in that are income tax sharing with the city of New Albany, interest income was higher than anticipated, and then that's also the line that we have tuition and fees, fee collections in. So when we have an increase in, say, all-day kindergarten, where we're collecting those tuition dollars, then that would, you would see that in this line. Though I will say, the majority of this is really the income tax sharing with the city of New Albany was higher, and then interest income, because our rates are up and we have more money left over to invest. So for revenue, we over-collected, or collected more than we anticipated, by $3.1 million. And if you remember, when we get down to the line for our transfers out, where we transferred money to PI, that's where a portion of that money came from. So then when we go down to expenditures, personnel services for the year was under budget by $1.7 million. The majority of that is through attrition costs, and we try to calculate that. I can't calculate it really precisely, because I can't get, so if we have a teacher who maybe has 28 years of experience, but it's not all with New Albany schools, I don't know that, and I can't get that from the state teachers' retirement system. So what I typically do is look at, what are our teachers' ages? How long have they been in our district, and what is the probability that they maybe are close to being able to retire? And so I can calculate what I believe that's going to be, and then we'll see if it's right. Some years, I hit it spot-on, and some years, no one leaves, because they love it so much. So we have that, and then the new hire cost. So you know, when we go through the forecast, we talk about the new hires that we have projected in the forecast. We, for certified staff, we budget a master's in four level. If Michael's team comes in under that, clearly that's a reduction in what we expected the cost would be. Then in the last, last year, if you remember, we negotiated a different salary schedule. And so that changed some of the columns, and the other thing that we didn't know was, where were people in the middle of those columns, and would they move over to the next column? So that actually came in higher than previous years. We paid about $100,000 more in that, but it was less than what I had expected, because we just, there was no way to know. I expect that we'll have additional increases this year, because I think there's just a bubble of people that were close, but not quite there, and so I do expect, I haven't seen the numbers yet, I know that HR is working on that, but I do expect that it'll be up a little bit, but then it's going to level off. So those two things, and then just reduction in overtime, extra time, those things, but the majority is through attrition and hiring at a lesser cost than what we had anticipated. But the majority is through attrition and hiring at a lesser cost than what we had anticipated in the forecast. And master's four level is what I've used since I've been here as an estimate, so. I didn't estimate that higher, so that we could see a savings. That's just what we use, because that's what Michael and his team believe is kind of what you're looking for to get someone who's experienced and has the academic training. Then employer retire, employee retirement insurance benefits was under-budget by $1.1 million. A portion of that, so about $270,000 of that is based on, it's associated with the decreased costs for personnel. So we know we have to pay 14% into the retirement system that's required by law. So anytime my, my salaries and, or my salaries are lower, then that 14% is going to be applied. But the rest of that is actually through the changes that we made to the insurance benefit level, so the high deductible plans that we put in place, and reduced claims, so then our premiums were, were lower. So those are the two drivers in that, that caused us to be so far under budget. And then the next line, purchase services, is a reduction of $454,000. Utility costs were under, our substitute costs were less than what we anticipated. And then we also, out of that line, are some of our foundation payment deductions, so community schools, autism scholarships, tuition to other districts, which we really have no control over, those two were slightly under budget as well. Supplies and materials, under $532,000. We had transportation costs were much lower, so fuel costs were way under, which was good, which, then we would look at this year to say, okay, if we had budgeted X and it came in at Y, do we lower that budget amount? Not expecting huge, you know, price increases. We also had maintenance and grounds built, and building costs that were under budget. And Superintendent Sawyer's, every year, when he's sending out the budget, when we send it out to our buildings and departments, his charge is to look at your budget from last year and then come in at least 10% under. And if you can't do that, you have to have a rationale as to why. And we do hold budget hearings, and when I first came, they all thought that I was the person that was going to hit them with all the questions, when really, it's Superintendent Sawyer's. So, but the question behind that is, so if you need more than what he's said, or more than that target budget, why do you need it, and how is that helping us with our statement of purpose? And they have to come with a rationale. And they do a really good job. And I would say, too, just throughout the year, I think the buildings and departments do a really good job of assessing all of the different requests that come through. And then if you go down to other objects, it is $304,000 under budget, and those were auditor and treasurer fees were slightly lower than what we expected. Our educational service center of central Ohio costs were not as high, and then we always have a $200,000 contingency, and that, too, is in there. For the record, we would not use the $200,000 as our financial goal of cutting costs, because that's just a, you know, if something blows up, we have some money to help fix it. So total expenditures, and this is the line that we would be looking at, was actually under-budget from October to June by $4.1 million. And then if you step down to operating transfers out, you can see that that one is actually higher by $5.5 million. That's because we moved, if you remember, I talked about the $3 million in revenue. We moved some of that money into permanent improvement. And then we had also made a promise to our voters that we would continue to spend $1.3 million from the general fund on maintenance and repairs. So what we did was, we promised it, we're taking that money, and we're just going to go ahead and transfer it into permanent improvement. That way, I know it's there, it's over there, we've taken it from general fund. So that was over budget, but we knew that and we expected that. Then all other financing uses, that $520,000 was what we anticipated. It actually came in at $593,000, and that is actually the win-win payment that we pay to Columbus schools. That is higher, because we had the revaluation, and that calculation is based on their property values versus our property values, and, and what that compares to. So in total, our ending cash balance is actually $1.7 million, even with the transfer out, better than what we had expected in October. So the majority of that, though, the personnel and the retirement insurance benefits, that actually flows through, that's a compounding effect. So if you take that and work it through, it's millions of dollars, not just in year one, but as you work it through the five-year forecast. So these are our base numbers, then, so the, the actual, that becomes the base year. And then we apply those to things that we can't calculate. So when I'm doing the forecast in October, I already know my staffing numbers. I have, well, we have a few more people we need to hire, but we're pretty much staffed. So what I do is take, here are all my staff, we pull them from the payroll system, here's where you are, step them, move them, what, what other cost of living adjustments do they receive because of the negotiated agreement, and then that becomes like the actual, the new base. So I would say that probably 85% of this forecast can be calculated. We do have a 5% increase in, for insurance premium increases. I don't know what that'll be. Last year, it ended up coming in at 3% because of the changes that we made in our plans, and because of just the premiums came in better, and the usage claims were better. So that's where we started out. And then, so, but when we looked at this goal, we had to look at the May forecast, because that's what I've actually, you know, that's what we have, those are the numbers that have been approved. So when you're looking at line 4.5 of the May forecast, $627,000 is about 1% of that total. So when we do the five-year forecast, even though my total, because if you look at this, our total expenditures ended up, we, we started out at $60,900,000, we ended up ending at $558, or $55,861,000. So if we just applied the 1%, we would have said that we only had to cut $558,000, but we wouldn't change the goal that was $609,000. And actually, we far exceeded it. I don't expect to have that same level of reduction this year, because we're year two of the negotiated agreement, the new salaries. So I don't expect to have that much of a reduction in the current year, but I do believe at least $627,000 can be cut from the budget. So Michael also passed out this sheet that is a cost per pupil, expenditure per pupil comparison. And so if you're looking at that, this is supplied by the state of Ohio, we don't have fiscal 18 numbers. We get this off of what is called a CUP report. So the state, the Department of Education actually calculates these, we've been giving them to you for comparison. But you can see that in fiscal 17, we were at $11,764, which is less than the fiscal 10 number, of $11,813. So we went up for a while, and then in the last two to three years, and I expect that it'll go down again, we've reduced that expenditure per pupil. So we believe that this 100, or $627,000 reduction is appropriate. Obviously, we're going to strive to do better than that. My goal is to stay off the ballot for operating expenses as long as possible. I think that's also Mr. Sawyer's and likely all of yours. So one way to do that is to be cutting in the current year. Questions?
What struck me, looking at the cost per pupil, is that our academic achievement has gone up as you've reduced the cost per pupil, so that's quite an achievement.
Yeah, it's very focused. Very focused.
So a few things. I want to make sure I understand first, the, our target of savings on, on any year's budget, which has been part of the benchmarks for the past two years and will be the benchmark, for argument's sake, it's about $600,000 a year, is that right?
Correct.
So in the first year of this, we save, because you achieved that target, so we saved $600,000 that year. Does that $600,000 savings in that year then get factored into the next year's budget, so that the, the next year's forecast is $600,000 lower to start than it would have otherwise been? So $600,000 savings in one year is equivalent to $3 million in savings over five years, is that, is that accurate?
That is correct. All things remaining equal.
Yeah, all things remaining. But I think it's important to recognize that when, when you save, based on how we do our budgeting and forecasting, you don't get to re-save the same $600,000.
Correct.
Right? It is, in fact, an incremental improvement, right?
Yes.
So I thought that was the case, and again, I, I looked ahead a little bit, but I thought that was the case, I did a little back-of-the-envelope math, and assuming we stick with around $600,000 in savings over a five-year period, in the first year, saving $600,000 is worth $3 million over five years. In the second year, saving $600,000 is worth $2.4 million over four years, because it's overall a five-year plan. In year three, $600,000, 1.8. Year four, $600,000 is worth 1.2, and then year five, it's one year's worth of $600,000. You add up all those numbers, it's $9 million in cumulative savings over five years.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty remarkable achievement. I mean, we're sitting here talking about academic achievement that's, that is, you know, likely up 300% in terms of the state report card from number 64 to number 20. You know, we've got incredible academic achievement, at the same time, we are spending taxpayer money clearly focused on academics and, and not focused on things that are less important, and we're staying off the ballot. And we're, we've got a positive cash flow, positive cash balance for years. And it's just a remarkable accomplishment of a very focused team focused on the things that map. So it's, I mean, I keep saying remarkable, but it's just remarkable.
Good. All right, I'll have Mr. Sawyer's come back to help you with Benchmark Seven.
Benchmark seven is ensure community engagement and stakeholder satisfaction. We're recommending this be maintained for 2018-19 with a couple amendments. Administer community and/or staff surveys to measure level of satisfaction with educational quality, school culture, communications, climate, and/or fiscal management. We'd like to get your input, because we definitely do a staff climate survey through Hanover. That's existed for the last two years. I intend to do it, because we'd like longitudinal data to understand how we can actually get better as a leadership team to support teaching and learning in all aspects of all positions across the school district. So it's valuable to the leadership team. The and/or becomes your opportunity. So in my conversations with Patrick specifically, we would like to do a community survey specifically our parent population on communications. So we know there's a communications theme that we are interested in, but the question becomes, what else are you interested in as far as the word "community survey"? So is it a survey involving only the New Albany Plain Local School District parents? Are you interested in a broader survey that does some random sampling associated to the school community at large, meaning Joe taxpayer, regardless of whether you have schools or kids enrolled in our school district? So you are that other side. So I know Patrick specifically, in our conversations with him and Beth, are interested in replicating the community survey we did two years ago, now that we've enhanced some communications and features within the school district to understand how that has benefited, or what additional feedback parents would like to give us. But what other survey data, if any, are you interested in learning as a board of education? So Benchmark number seven should exist. I know the staff climate is applicable, the community side of it, for us right now in a conversation that we're planning from an administrative perspective, and there's several other things that we could talk about, is specifically focused on communications. Is there other data you would like to have as a board of education related to community for stakeholder satisfaction, specifically parents, or the community at large as Joe taxpayer?
I have a, just a thought around community engagement and whether, I think you're asking this question, I'm not sure I have the answer, but short answer is yes, I'd like a little broader segment of the community's view, not a broader segment, a broader subject than communication. And it doesn't have to be anything complicated, I guess, I'm just thinking, we, we certainly hear from the community when things are going well, we also hear when there are challenges that we face, and so you get some of that immediate feedback, but it's almost like, we would love to hear best practices from the community that they're, have seen from other, other districts they've moved in, from things they're reading about, you know, how do we make, continue to, continuously improve the district, right? So if there is a way to survey something, a modern-day suggestion box that's really asking for that feedback, that otherwise we're sort of getting anecdotally as we go throughout our, our interactions with the, the community and the entire New Albany Plain Local School, that community interacts with the community. But I would like it to be a little bit broader and see what, what we can do to, again, take us to the next level, and make sure we have that formal request for input from the district at large. And whether it includes the business community or others, I'm, I'm open to that, but I'm primarily interested in the, the parent population of an APLS.
I would piggyback on what Paul is saying. I, I would like to get some feedback from parents of students at this point, and, and just learn, you know, what they think we're doing well, and what they think our current gaps are. I know, you know, over the last couple years, as we've transitioned our college guidance, college counseling, that had been a, a pretty hot topic in the community, and I would love to get, you know, some feedback now on how people think we're doing there, and, and any other areas that we might be able to get feedback from parents.
Do you envision that being like a, just a survey, so it's either done through a Google form? Is it facilitated by the school district? Do you see it being facilitated by a third party? Do you have a preference? Because we're going to have to do some research to try to bring solutions to you as options, and I can talk about that with board leadership, clearly. But, you know, do you want random phone sampling? Do you just want a survey instrument that's administered by the school district? Do you want a third-party facilitator? Do you want a third-party development? Do you want this to stay in-house, or do you want a consultant to do it?
I think it could be in-house. I think most parents are pretty comfortable giving feedback directly to us.
I'm, I'm going to disagree just a little bit, which I don't typically do with Debbie, but I, while it would be great to get a number of surveys from parents in the district, I really think that we have an opportunity here with the community survey to survey the community. We have a lot of people who live here, who, and I was, I was just thinking about this while we were looking at these numbers, you know, we're, we're asking a lot of people in this community to spend, well, as a district, we're spending about $12,000 a year to educate per pupil. And we know from the state that a, a very, very tiny portion of that comes from the state. Most of that is homegrown. And so we have a lot of people who spend a lot of money to educate the kids in our community. And this is an opportunity, I think, to not only get their feedback, but also maybe even at the, in the right way, inform them as well about all the things that their, that their dollars are going towards. One of the things that, and it, it may not just be in the survey, but one of the things I, I know from a communications perspective that these guys are working on and that we're going to continue to encourage, is it, you know, we, we're doing a great job communicating with parents, and I think we do a pretty good job of trying to reach out to the community, but, but finding more ways to engage the community at large in what's going on here, and being able to tell our story, and being able to celebrate the big wins, and all of those things that will, I think, create and further enhance the, the culture that we're trying to build here. That's, that's what I think we could utilize a, a survey to do. We can get some important feedback, too, but I think it's also a chance for us to sell the community.
Is there any way to do both? Because I-
Well, I, I think, I think there probably is, and depends on the, it depends on the, the instrument that you use, which is why I would probably consider a, a third-party entity. I don't know that we necessarily would need to do a, a typical live phone survey like we've done in the past. There are all kinds of online instruments that can be used now. There are, you know, IVR surveys, which are basically automated telephone surveys, to get the right proportion of the district that you want, so that we, we know that we're getting everybody. And, and you could do it in such a way that if there are, if it's a parent, they can be asked additional questions. If it's a community member, they can be asked questions. I mean, you can do surveys where, based on their answer, you can go into a different tree. That probably is a little more complicated than a Google Doc, but I, I think a lot of times when you put out a Google Doc, you only get responses from people who want to put something down on a Google Doc, you don't necessarily get a fair representation of the district. So I'd like to see this be something, if we're going to do it, something more broad, something community-focused, because that, to me, and again, this is anecdotal, I think we're doing pretty well with parents in the district right now. I'm sure that they all have their own issues or comments that they would like to provide, and we should give them an opportunity to do that. But I think in order for us to continue them, to continue with the- But I think in order for us to continue, to continue with the momentum, you know, we're not asking for any climate to tell us, you know, when we can go back on the ballot at this point, because we're not, we're not thinking about that. But I do think that it would be important to hear from the community about, you know, where they were two, three years ago and where they are now. And this is a great way to do that.
And to your point, I was thinking a little bit too about how do we make sure that people outside of our parent population are getting the message that things are going really well here and that, you know, we have a lot of momentum and a lot of progress.
And we're delivering great value to the community. I mean, this team is of teachers, faculty, staff, administration, is delivering really phenomenal value to the community at this point. And I think that's part of our job is to make sure that folks know it. And just as important, to find out what else they care about.
Right.
Right? What are we missing? Where do they want us to continue to focus? So in general, I share John's news. I certainly want to know what parents think.
Absolutely.
They are a, they're a very critical stakeholder in what we do here, but as a taxpayer-supported entity, our responsibility is to the entire community.
So we'll discuss this as a leadership team. Becky and I'll work on this, we'll have conversations. And John, I can follow up with you on the IVR. We can talk about a couple potential people who could do that. We'll put something together. So I think really the wording works because it's community and/or staff. We don't define community, it's broad enough that we can say that we're going to do both. The question is how, to Debbie's point with the tree, that you can be asked the additional questions if you are a parent, if there's something specific, using your example about the College Center or school counselors taking over the college role for college counseling at the high school. We can go down that path, same thing with communications that Patrick is interested in. That can be a thread that you basically go into if you say, yes, I'm a parent in the school district. So I think there's a way to do "and" and still accomplish what we're trying to do.
And on that one, you know, you probably don't even have a response unless you have a child who's...
You may not have a high school student.
Right.
Right. Because you haven't experienced it. Okay, we'll work on it. But Benchmark Seven should stay. It will continue, and then we'll work on the community side. The staff side will remain as the annual staff climate survey that we'll administer at the end of the school year through Hanover. Any other questions or comments related to the continuous improvement plan, the draft for 2018-19?
Excellent.
That's great.
Excellent. Excellent.
Yeah, we're in really good shape. We're very fortunate. So on behalf of the staff, because you don't always give yourselves credit, I do want to give the Board of Education credit. You are an integral part to the work that happens within the school district based upon the policy and governance that you do every single day. People don't know what you do outside of the board meetings. They just assume you show up and this just happens. Board members do get homework. So there are things that happen with board members in between board meetings. But on behalf of really the staff, the students, and the parents, I really do want to commend the five of you. It's not National School Board Month, and it's not Ohio School Board Month, but you too should be congratulated for really the vision of what you put in place for this school district and the aspirations that you established for the clarity of focus that you created through the statement of purpose. And then the charge, when I became superintendent, of what your expectations were for implementation. So it has been a team effort, but you're part of the team, and you too should be commended for that. You don't always give yourselves credit, and the five of you should be very proud of what we've done as a school district because you are also part of that team. Thank you very much.
Michael.
Back up there. The next discussion item is board policies. So I'll give Michael a chance to get back to his chair. And just to clarify, the CCIP, we have...
It's final.
It has to be final by the end of September, correct?
Correct.
So we have, we have a work session, then we have our next board meeting at the end of September, when we'll finalize that.
Correct.
Okay.
So also on the agenda this evening for discussion items, you have second reading for 13 policies that I reviewed at the last Board of Education meeting. Two of them are new pursuant to state statute or changes in state modifications for language. So I'm not going to go through the 13. If you have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or Ms. Jenkins will answer them, depending on what your question may be. But these are statutory changes to Ohioir Vice Code that have implemented changes to board policy and have presented this evening for second reading and then actually adoption later in the agenda.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Moving on, public participation. Do we have anyone this evening? So then moving out to treasurer's items, I just need a motion on treasurer's items A and B.
So moved.
Second.
Kalanowski and Mr. Neumoff, Ms. Jenkins.
So we talked about the June financials, and we also have July financials on the agenda. We're one month into the fiscal year, so we're on plan in all areas, not much to talk about there. And then we do have some appropriation modifications. We have an increase in the '18 public school support of $56,700. That is, a portion of that is the preschool special education playground equipment that we have decided to buy. We needed to increase the appropriation to offset some of that. And then we also wanted to put some money into the well-being initiative fund that we've created, since that's a new initiative and we didn't have that when we first started our budget. The other three increases are all federal grants, and we're just aligning that to the CCIP, the allocation that they've given us.
Any questions? With none, I have a roll call, please.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Neumoff?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Now for superintendent's items A through D, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Kalanowski, Mr. Bush, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, President McClellan. Board of Education members, personnel action items this evening are standard for employment purposes for the start of the school year that include the last of the hiring that we currently have. There'll be a few more left in September for educational assistance that we're currently processing for employment. The contractual terms and conditions requirement specifically for stipends or supplemental contracts that are pursuant to the negotiated agreement with Plain Local Education Association, as well as amendments to contracts based upon bus drivers who have received their midday routes for kindergarten or special needs transportation assignments to transport students with special needs across our school district. Letter B this evening for general business items includes a resolution for the Board of Education specifically for the approval of credential evaluators. So annually pursuant to Ohioir Vice Code, you have to approve the administrators within our school district that are assigned to teacher evaluations to complete the Ohio teacher evaluation process that's required by State Department statute, or Ohioir Vice Code and State Department regulations. You also have the approval this evening of four students to join our school district, two from Germany, one from Norway, one from Kyrgyzstan, as foreign exchange students that will be joining the New Albany Plain Local School District for the 2018-19 school year based upon their resident, or their host families being residents within our school district. And then additionally, there's an action item, you only see one time per year, and it's for the intermediate school and middle school career technical education provision that under state statute, you have to adopt resolution that we do not offer a career technical education program to students currently enrolled in grades six, seven, and eight within our school district. Letter C this evening for donations, as always, we're very, very grateful to the benefactors to our school district, and that is no exception this evening for letter C. And then letter D are the 13 Board of Education policies that I referenced previously for adoption. Happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, with none, we have a roll call.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Neumoff?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Second opportunity for public participation, with none, I will entertain a motion for a German.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Darrow, Ms. Kalanowski, roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski? Yes. Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Neumoff?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Second opportunity for public participation, with none, I will entertain a motion for a German.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Darrow, Ms. Kalanowski, roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?